Good evening. It is Thursday, April 6, 2023. It is approximately 6:58, sorry, 5:58 PM. And I call the City of Maple Plain Planning Commission meeting to order. Please stand with me as we say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First, are there any additions that we need to make to the agenda? Hearing none, I need to make a motion to adopt the agenda.
I'll make the motion to adopt the agenda.
Stephen adopts. Martell seconds. Great. So then, moving on. We need to review the minutes for the January 5 Planning Commission meeting and ultimately approve them.
Do you want to have a vote on the, do you need a vote on the?
Oh, yes, my bad. All in favor to adopt the agenda as is, say aye.
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 All, um, all not in favor, say the same. Eyes have it six to zero. There we go. Now we can move on. Approval of the January 5 Planning Commission meeting minutes. Are there any points of discussion for those minutes?
They look good to me. I make a motion that we approve the minutes of the January 5 meeting.
Oh, second motion.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 All against, say the same. Eyes have it six to zero. Okay, moving on to the next agenda item. We need to have a public hearing for the zone code review. I think first I'll turn it over to Mark to kind of brief us on what's happening.
Thank you, Honorable Chair Commissioners. Nice to see everybody tonight. The item before you tonight has been a long time coming. The city undertook the process of codifying its ordinances, I think two years ago now. And in the hopes that, one, we could create a digital and searchable platform that would be much more readily available and easily used by constituents and residents of the city. And then, two, just cleaning up the ordinances. It had been some time since the city had gone through a codification process, looking for, really like errors in numbering, grammatical errors, or in, in some places, actually trying to provide clarity to certain ordinances that we have come across or used in the, with experience that just should be clarified or cleaned up. And so, the city's gone through it. This, the codification company that the city hired to do this is called MuniCode. They're one of the probably most widely used. There's really two, American Publishing is the other one you'll see. But if you, if you read a lot of ordinances like I do, this is a national base, a company that has a national database of city ordinances or municipal ordinances, county ordinances. And they then host those ordinances in a digital format online. And they're really pretty exceptional, actually, at what they do and then how they format. And, and then the interface that they have. So, in any case, the city had hired them to go through and review our ordinances. They did that over the course of maybe almost 18 months, I think, trying to provide a kind of clean, clear, and decisive set of ordinances for the city. In doing that, we also reviewed all of the ordinances of the city, and we, meaning staff, including consultants and city attorney, and then identified things in the ordinance that needed to be updated, just as a result of, like I said, more clerical, more of a clerical type correction or update. And then, we also reviewed the ordinance for content, trying to identify areas in the ordinance that could use or kind of were known to need clarifying language or just needing clarification in the sense that we found or know of conflicting requirements for, for various provisions. And so, we're, we're at a point now where we're ready to present a final ordinance to the city. And as planning commissioners know, or I think most of you know, the city's planning commission has a responsibility by ordinance to review and ultimately recommend changes pertaining to two parts of the city's overall code of ordinances, the subdivision ordinance and the zoning ordinance. So, planning commission has the ability to essentially recommend changes in those two areas. The other parts of the city's ordinance have also been included in this review, but the, the city council is the one who gets to review and then ultimately change or approve other sections. Now, as you know, if you've been around for a long time, at different times, council charges the city's planning commission with other areas outside of planning and sub, or zoning and subdivision, right? We've talked in the past about nuisances and animal control and things like that. But those areas by, by, by kind of statute and then by the city's ordinances are not the, the ordinances that planning commission has, quote unquote, jurisdiction over. So, we're focusing just on subdivision and the zoning ordinance in the review that we're putting in front of the planning commission. We're holding a public hearing tonight because we are making or recommending that the city consider making some changes to the ordinance that while probably are not really material changes, just do clarify certain sections of the ordinance. And based on the city attorney's recommendation, he thought it was prudent that we would just hold a public hearing tonight. And then, if there was recommendation to adopt any of these changes, whether clerical or otherwise, that we would be sufficiently covered by this process. So, with that, there are, we presented to you the, the sections of the ordinance that are being codified, which is the entirety of the subdivision and zoning ordinance. But we pulled out, or I pulled out, some areas that I thought were more of those clarifying areas and not, and not that just renumbering or, or something like that. To just have, to bring to your attention and then answer questions and/or have discussion on any of the items that we're showing you or talking about tonight. So, I tried to plot just kind of key elements that we thought needed to be updated or clarified and not so much focus on some of the just minor elements or what I would consider kind of clerical. So, I'll just talk about those. If there's questions on anything in there, feel free to ask, or we can talk about it. And I'll go through these and then, and then we can go from there. The first one that I highlighted is Section 10418 relating to design standards. This falls out of the city's subdivision ordinance and it talks about easements for drainage and utilities. Really, it's, it's our utility easements that we have in place. Our ordinance has in it, and you can see the language, easements of at least six feet wide centered on rear lot lines shall be provided for utilities when necessary. And then easements for storm or sanitary sewers shall be at least 20 feet wide. They shall have continuity, continuity of alignment from block to block. Temporary construction easements may be required where installation depths are greater than 10. Utility easement shall be kept free of any vegetation, structures, blah, blah, kind of, et cetera, et cetera. So, one of the things that we noted when we were looking at that is in practice, and this practice dates probably to somewhere, at least that I can find in the 2000s, we are requiring that easements be 10 feet wide along front and rear property lines and that they are five feet wide on side property lines. And that's how we've been practicing. Now, as you know, we don't do a lot of new subdivisions, but the subdivisions we have done, that's what we've required. And so, that does not follow the easements of at least six feet wide exactly, because that's a little bit misleading, that language, at least six feet wide. That would mean you'd have a three-foot easement on either side of the property line if a six-foot easement was centered. And so, with that, we think this is a, this is a change that just needs to be made. We think it's in keeping with, I would say, you know, 90% of the cities in the state of Minnesota, or maybe for that matter, around the country, have a 10-foot front and rear and a somewhere between five and 10-foot side, side yard easement. So, it's kind of a standard easement that we obtain. Those easements then are utilized by the city for drainage and/or utilities, right? So, if you were to do, say, a new subdivision where you're going to subdivide lots, say, like the Meadows is one of our, you know, only or recent ones, not only would you have the city's right-of-way, but then behind the right-of-way, so onto private property, the city would obtain a 10-foot wide drainage and utility easement. And in that easement, we would often locate things like small utilities, cable, internet, gas, electric, potentially could all run inside of that 10 feet, outside of the city's right-of-way, which then leaves the city's right-of-way for sewer, water, storm sewer, which is oftentimes taking up the majority of the remainder of that right-of-way. So, we think this is a, kind of a reasonable easement. This is what we have been doing in practice and we want to memorialize it and kind of take the confusion out of the ordinance by doing that. We also noted that there is a provision in there that easements for storm or sanitary sewers shall be at least 20 feet wide. Really, that should be determined by the city engineer and that's a variable number. And it's all based on the depth of given, of that said infrastructure and then what's around it that would obstruct our ability to essentially replace, repair. And so, depth has everything to do with that. And that 20 feet wide might only need to be 15 feet wide in certain instances, or it might need to be 60 feet wide, depending on what it is, where it is, and how deep. So, rather than putting in there a set number, I think it's better in, in the case of storm or sanitary sewers to determine that on a case-by-case basis, which is how we would do that typically. So, that's, that's Section 10418, design standards. Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I do. Mark, on the front, I realize this has been practice and probably works out just fine, but I think about, for a 10-foot front easement, in addition to the street right-of-way, I know in my house, I've got maybe 15 feet worth of street right-of-way.
Yeah.
Before the real property line, so add on another 10 feet, you know, that's 25 feet from the curb, say, which is the majority of my front yard. Is that excessive? Is that, has that been a problem at all in the past?
No. I mean, typically, no. And I mean, you got to remember, I mean, even on our, even in, in our kind of least restrictive standards for setbacks from property lines, we're somewhere around 25 feet is our kind of minimum setback. Now, in the, in the downtown business issue, we might have a zero-foot setback, but for residential purposes, typically, we're in that 25-feet setback range. And that setback is from the property line, not the right-of-way, I mean, not the, the street or, or what have you. So, you know, that would still leave 15 feet of, of yard. Now, it, it's not that you can't use that, it's just, it's, it has a restriction for utility purposes. You can still put fences within drainage and utility easements, landscaping within drainage. You just wouldn't be able to put a structure, but in front yards, that's really not that restrictive.
Landscaping would be at, at risk, I guess, if you were planting trees or had other landscaping.
Yeah, and they make them.
And, you know, we would, we would try to plant trees typically in the boulevard, within the city's right-of-way for street tree purposes, but then, yeah, if somebody wanted to plant behind that, they could. 10, I mean, and certainly you can provide direction or, or comment on it. 10 is fairly common, I mean, not fairly, I mean, I think it's the standard.
Yeah, and I imagine the street right-of-ways vary as well, too. It just so happens that, you know, it's around 15 or so feet for, for me. So, the city would have the ability or right to come in, say, 25 feet from the curb and, you know, rip out whatever is there if something needed to be dug up.
Yeah, and like I said, the majority of the time, from the city's standpoint, we reserve that 10 feet or that 10 feet's utilized by small utilities. So, you know, and those things are rarely impacted, right? Once they go in, they, they don't have a lot of, you know, digging up or anything. But you're right, I mean, that, that is what we're talking about is.
Typically a horizontal.
That. Yeah, and I'm, I'm, I'm going to tell you, Stephen, because you, you have me intrigued on your house specifically. I'm just going to look really quick.
You know where I live?
Is that good or bad?
Yeah, I don't know.
Here's, here's the reality of that. I know where your neighbor lives. And by default, I know where you live.
Well, yeah.
And there's a history there, right? That you know well, so, yeah.
Things are all good there now, by the way.
That, that, well, yeah, that's good. So, from the right-of-way to your house, 30 feet.
No, I'm not proposing any changes, I just wanted to kind of get more background on.
No, and that, it's a good question and it's always something that, you know, I mean, certain cities, I mean, I see cities that have like a five-foot side, a six-foot side, or a 10-foot side, but almost all have front and rear 10. Minnesota, not so much, but a lot of places in the country, they run sanitary sewer in rear yards. So, I mean, you know, I, I practice kind of around the country and a lot of times they put sanitary in the backyards, not down the middle of the street. It's easier to, if you think about the design of that, it's much better. Minnesota's a walkout state, right, which is really unique. Not very many places in the country are these walkout states. They don't do that. They only do it where topography allows it, right? But in Minnesota, we artificially make everything walkout. It is somewhat unique. I mean, go to, go to anywhere in the, the Sun Belt, go anywhere in the Southwest, go anywhere down in Florida or, or the Southeast, and you just can't even do it. The soils don't allow, there's a high water table, it's rock. So, it is a little bit unique. But that was why I think a lot of those rear yard easements got, were important is because we ran a lot of utilities historically. Now, I will say, more and more, we're running more and more stormwater utility in that rear yard easement because soils are bad and we need drainage. And so, now we're putting mechanical systems as well as grading in those rear yard easements. So, but, yeah, I mean, this is, this is what we practice. We don't have a lot of subdivision to go, go on, right? But when we do, say, replat a piece of property, we will obtain the perimeter drainage and utility easements.
But with existing, it doesn't change that?
No. We wouldn't, this doesn't apply to existing. It's only if you were to plat new. Now, begs the question, like, you're going to see a sub, a minor subdivision next month of a lot that's existing? And I don't believe they have drainage and utility easements, but they want to split it in two, which technically would mean that this would kick in and we'd ask, not ask, we'd take the, the requisite drainage and perimeter drainage and utility. And so, as properties subdivide, we would, we would obtain that.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, next one is Section 10540, R2, single and two-family residential district. This is really a typo, but I just, we, I pulled it out just to highlight it. But we have some instances in our ordinance like this and I, I don't think it's anybody's fault. It's just how things get amended over the years. Sometimes people do it in, in kind of a different style. But under 10540 R2, if you look at permitted uses, which is what I'm showing, number two of permitted uses is group homes by conditional use permit. And so, it was a, it's a little bit misleading. I've had questions on it in the past, whether or not it's really intended to be permitted or CUP, but we think it clearly is a conditional use. And so, what we would do would add group homes under the conditional use section of 10540. So, every one of our zoning districts, we have permitted accessory and conditional. In this case, we would move group homes to conditional use.
I have a question for you.
Yeah.
And that, too, at the bottom, you've got number one crossed out.
I don't think, I think that's not meant to be. I think it's going to be one and then two. So, new wireless support structures for small wireless facilities is still conditional use.
Okay. So, that, that cross out will go away.
Yeah, I don't.
That will be number one.
I noted that, but we probably just need to note that with, so that cross out, that, that kind of official cross out is a MuniCode cross out.
Oh.
The group homes are like, you see some of the notes are our city attorney notes.
Okay, so there will be two, two items listed there, the new.
Correct.
Wireless support structures and group homes.
Correct. It's a good clarification. I don't know, Clarice, if you want to note that or you want me to note that.
So, Mark, where in the city group homes can be then?
Well, as a conditional use permit, they can be in the R2. I believe they can be in all of our districts as conditional. I'd have to, I have to double-check that, but I have it right here. So, let's, I mean, we can, I can answer that. So, yeah. They can be in all zoning districts by conditional use, all residential.
That, no?
Is that what?
Is that, no?
No.
Would I find it in this?
Yeah. And, and it says it in there. What, what we're clarifying is not group homes. We're clarifying that the way that it was listed, it is a little bit confusing. And so, we're just trying to clarify that it's a conditional use per, which is what you want it as.
Right.
Yeah. So, it still has to come through a full planning, public hearing.
Okay.
And everything. They're not by right.
Okay.
Yeah, it currently says group homes by conditional use permit, but under conditional uses, it's not listed. So, it's just putting it in the correct spot.
Next one, 1055, 541 R2A, single-family residence. This is one that has come up a couple of times in practice and we're making a recommendation that this is clarified and we think this is the intent of how it was supposed to be, but we'd be happy to discuss or have feedback. So, in the R2A, single-family residential district, there are a multitude of different types of housing that are allowable as either permitted or conditional uses. And so, within that district, we talk about single-family and two-family dwellings. Then we talk about three-unit family dwellings. And then we talk about four-unit family dwellings. And there is a provision that states lot width. And the lot width is stated is 120 feet minimum. But in the, in the area requirements provisions, it says, single and two-family dwellings shall meet the area requirements of the R2 district. And if we were to look at then the R2 district, we would see that the lot width is different for that particular district. And we think that in practice, the, the minimum lot width for a single or two-family dwellings in the R2 district is meant to be lesser, so 80 feet. But, so what we were, rather than 120 for all single and two-family dwellings, so what we are proposing is to actually differentiate one and two-unit buildings from three and four-unit buildings. And so, to do that, we were, we were thinking that it should be one and two units has an 80-foot minimum and three and four units has a 120-foot minimum. So, that is, I mean, this is a change, right? Because the ordinance way it's written would stipulate 120, but there is this kind of gray, confusing piece. If you go back and look at the R2, how does R2 treat that? And does it, is it consistent? And so, this is, this is one way we could address that. Right now, in the R2 district, it says, single-family is 75 and two-family is 120. But if you go and look at almost all of the lots in the city, they're 80, 80 feet in width. And I think our intent was that we would allow both a one and a two-unit kind of duplex on an 80-foot lot. But then, if we were to go to something three or bigger, it would have to go to that, almost that double lot or 120-foot lot. This isn't something that comes up often, but occasionally, there's, you know, we have a couple of lots that have come up for sale in the R2A district and there was questions on what was the minimum lot width. So, we think this is a, kind of a reasonable clarification, if you will, or just trying to provide clarity. But this is one of those things that I was saying is kind of like between, it's not a clerical only. This does have material effect on the ordinance, so we, you know, part of why we're talking about it. Any thoughts on that or question or?
This is basically just updating it for new subdivisions then, primarily what it's being named at?
It would. So, where this would come into impact is, in the R2A zoning district, if somebody were to purchase a property and wanted to convert it to a duplex, they could do that under an 80-foot, which I think was the intent of the R2A. It was this kind of transition zoning. If they wanted to convert a property in that R2A district to three units or anything greater than the two-unit building, they'd have to have more land than what most of those properties provide, meaning they'd probably have to acquire two. Now, we know, like, that property at 1701 Baker Park Road, that one was wider, right? But that was one of the anomaly properties we have in the city that zoned R2A, where actually had more, more width than 80 feet. And we have a few of those, right? I mean, they're going to come up and every time one of these little bit larger properties comes up, we get calls on, is it a, can I do something more with it, right? So, this would just clarify that the two-unit could be down to 80 feet, which is, I think, in keeping with the standards of the R2 district more so, but, or at least the intent.
By and large, are most lots 80 feet in width?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think that's a pretty fair.
The subdivision that's coming up next month, I was looking.
That's 80.
And that's how we caught this, is, is most of the, most of the lots in that neighborhood are 80, 80, 80, 80. And that's pretty, I mean, think, when you platted back in the day.
Yeah.
The size of the lot is all generally the same.
Okay.
I think you get much narrower, narrower than that against top, because if it's 10 feet off each side, you're 60 feet a little building area, so.
And so, and that's where I think that came from was, I mean, in some ways, 80 was always a standard for R1 districts a long time ago. But if you think about a duplex or twin home, you know, typically, you're going to have those starting at about 26 feet wide as their, that's kind of that minimum. That gives you like a 22-foot garage and then the four feet or whatever to get in the front door, however you do that. But that's like 26, 28, 30 is right around the bare bones for a twin home. And then, and then, you know, it goes up, but. And again, we're only talking about R2A, so that's a really limited district that we're talking about, you know, in our zoning ordinance. I could show it.
It's basically Baker Park Road?
Yeah, I mean, I could pull it up for you guys. It's between Main and Independence and then the properties along Baker Park Road. So, you know, we'd always talked about kind of going up to Independence as a transition between the gateway and the single-family homes north of Independence. So, that, that district is that sandwich in between Independence and Main Street.
Did that sort of change with the latest comp plan?
Yeah, we re-guided that land to mixed use, but it's still zoned R2, right? We didn't change the zoning. Baker Park Road's still the same.
It is?
Yeah.
I thought we changed that, but.
We, we changed the, the sandwich area for the guidance.
Yeah, may, yeah, maybe.
Is that what you're thinking?
Well, yeah, Baker Park Road, I maybe we changed the, same thing there, changed the guidance, but not the zoning?
Yeah. We did. We changed it. Well, and again, it's not the same because we call low density residential all the way through there. And then, um, mixed use residential. But that low density residential allows that one in four, one to four units per acre density. So, yeah, we didn't, we didn't change the zoning, but we did change how it was projected, but it's still is pertinent to the R2A zoning district.
Okay.
But you're right. We, we did change in the comp plan the density of how we projected that.
Yeah, I think we the grand plan, twenty, you know, fifteen years ago was, you know, maybe that could be process could be combined together to have some larger, uh, larger dwellings, um, or even, you know, small apartment buildings along there, but it's not, not really becoming a reality. And I think the thought was to backtrack on that, on that concept.
Right. And so what this still, what this does is still allows the duplex, you know, in that zone, but
Right.
Probably much larger than that. You'd have to acquire and assemble.
Right.
Outside of that one seventeen oh one, that one anomaly property, right? I mean.
Yeah, yeah. I think that was probably one of the original Farmstead properties or something. I'm not sure.
I think there's two more on there. There's the one all the way at the north end of that northeast corner of may have planned right up against the, almost to the curve on Baker Park. That one's a big property. And then, um, at Main and, and twelve, the one that's on the northwest corner, that one's a little bit bigger. But the seventeen oh one is here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
These seem reasonable to me.
Any else? So, um, there was a couple of, of changes just relating to that R2A. So we had, uh, ten, ten five forty-two, PUD, R2A, which that was the seventeen oh one Baker Park Road district. That was the PUD district. The way that we originally had incorporated into the ordinance, um, the city attorney, after reading the whole ordinance, decided it would be better if we made this, it's just a technical change. But I wanted to point out that he's recommending that we, that we update it and you can see that now in our update for that section. Um, he, he essentially moved the, the whole thing. Oh, I just shut that. I'm just gonna hold back up here.
On page, uh, seventy-four of the PDF?
Is that what it, yeah.
Seventy-four, seventy-five, yeah.
Going back, yeah. Okay. Is that where it is? I can't see it, but.
So I'm, uh.
Seventy-five on the top right corner, I think. It's a statement in red, planned unit development.
Okay, yep. So that's, that's where he changed it. So there's nothing technical, I mean, nothing, uh, material in that. I just thought I'd point that out that we did make that move. The section one fifty-three oh three two I two, general industrial zoning, this is something that's been a pet peeve of mine since I've been with, uh, Maple Plain, I think anybody else who ever read the ordinance. So I, like, right, I, I think in two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve, the city changed the industrial zoning and we got rid of I two and just went to a singular I one zoning district. But that never got removed from the, the ordinance, um, correctly. And it was done correctly. It just never got removed correctly. So it's been in the ordinance and, um, if you go online or you search the ordinance, you'll see this I two and you're going, what? How does that fit in? So, uh, it's finally gone. It's all gone. So I one is the only ordinance, uh, pertaining to industrial. And then, um, I would note in, uh, section tens, uh, ten six hundred, um, this is something that has bugged me in practice and, and I deal with this quite a bit in practice and it relates to accessory buildings. And, um, I wanted to clarify, and there is a little bit of, um, there is something for you to think about or talk about here. Um, so in the, um, ten six hundred accessory building section, there's kind of two conflicting provisions, the way that I read and interpret this ordinance, and I'll tell you how I've practiced, but, um, in ten six hundred, section A, it says, "All permanent accessory structures shall be located wholly to the rear of the house or main building, to which it is incidental with at least twenty feet of separation between the main building and the accessory buildings. When so placed, the permanent building shall be no less than five feet distance from any lot boundary line other than the street line and no less than thirty-five feet distance from a lot boundary line, which is also a street line. Accessory buildings are further limited to not exceed one story in height or sixteen feet." And then it talks about the garage door opening. So when I read that, to me, I read that accessory buildings must meet a, or can be located as close as five feet from any lot boundary other than a street, which would be the front yard boundary line. If you go down then to provision number or letter C, it says, "No dwelling or accessory building shall be erected on any tract of unplanted land," which that gets kind of goofy on, are we really trying to determine if it's platted, unplatted, which isn't difficult necessarily in itself, but are we really trying to differentiate that? Closer than fifteen feet to the side lot line or closer than five feet to the rear lot line of the tract on which the building is to be located. So there, to me now, it says you can have a five foot rear yard setback for an accessory building, but you must have a fifteen foot side yard setback. In practice, I have in my practice with the city, and this goes back to collaboration with administrators and engineers and other people. I didn't do this in a vacuum, but I asked and we kind of said, it, it really is just five feet from the rear and five feet from the side. If you, most lots in the city, if you start to get fifteen feet off the side property line in somebody's rear yard to locate a shed, you're getting into the middle of their yard with a shed, and I don't think that was ever anyone's intent. And then when you look around the city, if you just kind of walk around or scan in aerial, you're going to see most sheds are in that corner, right? They're in one of those corners. And I think fifteen feet is restrictive and, and unreasonable. I think if you're putting a shed up and you have to be, you can be five to the rear, but fifteen off the side, you're going to end up in, you're going to end up somewhere else, so. But.
Yeah, was the intent of that, you know, says unplatted, so was that meant to be like some undeveloped property that, uh, as you're designing it?
Uh, that's what I couldn't, but if you think about unplatted, that would be a lot, there's quite a few lots in the city that are platted, but there's still quite a few that are unplatted. And usually the ones unplatted are the smaller lots that are like the older lots. So I, yeah, I just don't know, I don't know why, right? If it's unplatted land, so I just think it would be clean if we take it out. We've been practicing five and five for at least since two thousand and thirteen, so.
Didn't we just say?
Drainage.
Yeah, we had a ten foot in the back.
Ten foot, yeah. So on new lots with ten foot drainage and utility, you would have to, you couldn't locate a structure within a drainage and utilities.
Technically, would you have to be five feet off the easement?
No, you'd be on, you could be on the easement. And I'll be honest, a lot of cities grant encroachment agreements to easements. And that's something we, if we were going to get into a lot of lots, we might want to think about that, but the, the reality is we've got a ton of lots in the city that will never have those ten foot drainage and utility easements where five and five makes a lot of sense.
How many existing lots have ten foots rear setbacks for utilities?
I haven't found a, any. I mean, I don't think any of the older lots have them.
Okay, so just, we're just calling that out for new lots?
Yeah, and, and we don't, you know, right now, I mean, thi- this would say that you could go as close as five feet, but.
Should we include a clause in here that says except for new properties?
Yeah. Maybe that's a good recommendation. Ex- uh, accessory structures cannot be located within drainage and we just put a blanket, cannot be located within drainage and utility easements. Which is true anyway, but.
True, but if we say explicitly, you can be, you can be five feet, but yet there's a ten foot utility easement, then we'd kind of be in conflict with that already.
You would on new lots that have it, right? But then that goes true for anything. So if somebody has a, um, Excel energy easement, you know, across their property for a power line or something, they can't put a building in it. No matter what the setback says. So our setbacks don't trump the the drainage and utility easement restrictions. It is a.
As long as that's clear, yeah, that, that somebody might not come and, you know, raise a conflict with that.
I think what we could do is just put a statement in there that says accessory structures, um, cannot be located within drainage and utility easements.
Or reference the, whatever, uh, whatever code we were referencing at the beginning here. Reference, you know, it must be in compliance with.
All of the subdivision ordinance relating to that? Okay. I can craft something. It's a good recommendation because you're right.
Would that be, uh, yeah, uh, ten dash four eighteen?
Yeah. Cleaning it up, let's make sure it's really clean, right?
Mm-hmm.
No, it's a good, it's a good catch. Any other questions?
Um, just in regards to accessory buildings, I'm thinking of sheds, garages. Is there any other types that could be involved in a, or considered an accessory building other than those two?
Yeah, I mean, we, we consider accessory structure, right? So that can be a lot of things, um, but it's got to be permanent.
Okay.
So, um, so this would apply to, to, well, what is, the, the language is accessory buildings, right?
Yep.
However, we define that. Let me see. It, I mean, it would be applicable though.
But it's more of a permanent structure.
Right.
Okay.
I was, I, I have to go back up to, I don't think it's defined right there. It says, "All permanent accessory structures shall be located." So that's, that's everything. And then, um, we don't define it there. So the question is, do we define it in our definition? I'll go back, I'll go look.
Would a small shed really be considered an accessory structure if it could be built easily?
Yeah, it's still.
Yeah, there's no like minimum.
One twenty is where building code kicks in, so less than a hundred and twenty feet does not require a building permit. So if you did a, you know, eight by ten or something, you would be able to do that without a building permit. You still require a zoning permit for location.
Yep.
And then we do have a temporary, um, definition as well. So I was trying to find is our definitions section.
Yeah, it's one nine six oh one or ten dash six oh one.
Man, if, if we had this up on a, on a new set, it'd be great. Um, is that, I see the temporary in ten six oh one, but I'm trying to go back to the beginning to see.
Yeah, because usually there's a whole definitions section.
Yeah, in here. And I know we do definitions, one fifty-one. No, that's flood plain. Where? Here's our overall. Must be, oh, here. Let's see.
Six four.
I was just trying to see where we define or if, I think we do. If anybody finds it.
For temporary structures?
Well, temporary, I see that definition here. I think it's here. Let me see. Accessory building. So we say, I did, it's in one fifty-three da- dot oh oh seven. We say, "A subordinate building, whether permanent or temporary, which is located on the lot of the main building and the use of which is clearly incidental to the use of the main building." So that covers like any shed, um, permanent or temp, like even if it's on skids or it would cover that. And we, and then I think we do, well, we define temporary then down in that next section, which is a little bit. But we also define temporary structures in our definitions sections as event tents, canopies, tarp, garages, hoop buildings and other similar membrane structures, which is pretty common definition. I mean, things that I think about as structure that most people like, don't kind of put their head around is, like, if you were to put in like a permanent, um, like pergola type structure. Some are, you know, if it's, I mean, if it was with a ru- with a roof on it and supporting members and it was affixed to the ground, I'd call that permanent. If it was like one of those, you know, like a little vine trellis or something like that, that wouldn't be, you know? So there's a little bit of art to that, but, so to your question, I think, yeah, it's mostly sheds or detached garages.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, no, there's not related to here, uh, or rural area on a lake that's been a, that we live on, that's, or have a cabin that's been a hot point of what's a temporary structure because sheds are popping up right next to the lake as a temporary.
Yeah.
And not, uh, it's been an issue.
Well, yeah, I see it all the time. I mean, a lot of people that, they'll put a, they'll license their shed as an ice house or fish house. So they'll go literally get the sticker and then stick it on the window and they go, see, it's temporary. And I'm like, mm, nope. Moving. Show me that it moves.
Yeah.
So anyway, yeah, I, it definitely gets sticky, but this is really, this to me is the shed provision for Maple Plain, just because the acreages here support like a standard backyard shed, right? And that's what we get a lot of. And that's the question I get all the time is, what are my setbacks? So we've kind of adopted the five and five. It's five from the rear, five from the, um, side, can't be in the front yard. That's what, that's what it is.
Yeah, I think that works.
Okay.
I have a question on lighting. Uh, it's on page eighty-five of your PDF. Uh, can you, could you explain, uh, why that last sentence was deleted? Was it just redundant?
Yeah, because I think our lighting ordinance speaks, speaks to this. And then when I was going through this, I, the provision, the extra provisions of lighting, I thought were redundant and I didn't want it to get confusing.
Okay, that's kind of what I thought too.
And so I thought rather than have lighting standards and mul-, I just don't like standards in multiple places because then if you ever do change one and you didn't get the other, then you're conflicting. So I just thought it was better to keep, and I think our lighting ordinance is, speaks for itself as good. So I thought, let's just leave it in the lighting ordinance and not try to pull it into the development standard.
Speaking of the lighting ordinances, anything else changed in lighting in regards to internally lit signs?
No.
In this?
Nope. Nope. Just checking.
That's another discussion for another day.
Mike, you want to bring that up since you're here temporarily?
He's like, nope, not going to push that.
Been there, done that. No, uh, I mean, you, you know that council, I mean, at this point, it's just where it's at. It is what it is and that might be revisited at some point in the future, but not right now.
Okay. Well, I think overall this is great to get it cleaned up and it's really great to have it be online and searchable and much more, you know, easily accessed. Not only by us, but by the, by the public.
Is it all going to be on one document?
Yeah. If you search any city around, like
It's Delano.
Go to Delano or go to Independence or go to
They have it.
Any, Warno or Medina, just search. Any, Warno or Medina, just search, try it, go to municode.
Yeah.
Ah, it's just, like, for somebody who uses ordinance, or you guys are enforcement, you, you use the ordinance, it's going to be so great, because it's super well organized, so, and you can search by keyword. So if you go, man, I can't remember what that ordinance is, but I know, I know it was, you know, I know chickens was in it, then you can type in chicken, and boom, it'll pop every reference to that in the entire city code. So then you can really quick just go through and go, oh, that's the, that's the sentence I was thinking about that was restrictive, so it's going to be great for the city, great for our residents, great for people doing business here to have this as a reference, but it's really great for staff, because it, it helps us, I mean, you know, we get calls every day from a realtor, from a home buyer, from just saying, you know, what, how big of a shed can I build? What's my setbacks for if I want to add a porch on my house, or I want to put a deck, or? And now we can really just easily reference that, and they can find it, so. Because what we've been doing historically here is we have PDFs of our ordinances, and that's, we kind of cut and paste them and send them, and it, it's terrible. And you know the, the PDFs that we have, there's something in the print of those PDFs that changed characters in the font, and they're not even, some of the letters aren't even clear, right, so?
It's tough to even remember which one you clicked on.
Yeah.
That's when, when I moved here, I, it was tough to try to go through that and figure out, can I, what if I have, put fill in, do I need?
Right.
That was tough.
So grading permit?
Yeah.
Boom, you'll be able to type, and it'll just, it'll just take you to the section that's pertinent, or all the sections, right?
So we can return our hard copies?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'd recycle them.
Except for, except for our deals.
The timing on this to go live would be after council consideration, like, and then how long?
It depends on how long it takes me to make the changes here after this, so.
Maybe summer-ish?
Yeah.
It's a long process, it really is a long process, and then the other nice thing, once municode gets involved, where the city continues to pay municode to host, and then do the codification, when you go into an ordinance, municode will post what's changed, so you can see, if you ever want to follow along, you can see what's changed, when it changed, and kind of the date, which is really great historical knowledge for ordinances, so if you ever have to go back and reference, when did something change, what changed, they have all that history, so. Once you get involved, they kind of get you, but it's like everything else, right? I mean, we, we pay user fees for things, and we just kind of get used to it, but it's a really good, I like municode, and I'm, I mean, I've obviously done it for twenty-six years now, but I, I think it's probably the best of the hosting site, so. Yeah, with that, I mean, if, if you, if we're comfortable with these changes, what we would ask is just simply a recommendation from planning commission to the city council to adopt the changes as presented. I noted that on accessory structures, we will make that change, and I would just ask that you recommend approval with that, with a modification, and I'll give it to the city attorney to language, to put the language on that, if that's okay, and then we'll take that to council, so they'd ultimately get to ratify whatever that is.
But, yep, I was just going to say, but before doing that, I'm going to open this to the public hearing at seven fifty-two PM for any public comments.
It's only six.
Sorry, it's six fifty-two. Got to look at the digital watch, I guess. Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing at six fifty-two and twenty-five seconds. There we go.
That be our shortest one yet?
So, we need, eh, we need a motion to adopt the changes as suggested by the staff and team, along with the recommendations we offered, to apply changes to the ten six hundred ordinance, I believe, and I believe Mark and our city attorney will go forward with making the language for that. But yeah, I need a motion to approve that.
I'll make that, that motion to recommend approval of these changes, and with the additional change on setback of accessory structures.
Okay, Stephen makes the motion. Do I get a second?
I will second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All reject, say the same. Ayes have it, five to zero.
This will go to the city council at their next meeting on April twenty-fourth.
Okay.
May fourth?
We're going to hit a workshop, actually, between-
Oh. We're going to hit a workshop.
Moving on to item six, commissioner reports and other business, anybody else have anything they want to say or do, or?
I have a couple of things. I was approached to, by somebody that lives in Maple Plain, and I didn't know the answer, so I have to apologize, but they were wondering if we were ever going to get the QuickTrip, or whatever the marketplace that we were supposed to be, that was years, two years ago. Have they decided not to come to town?
Got me the answer?
Okay.
So, I mean, the city has continued to talk to QuickTrip, we met with QuickTrip two months ago, I think, and they have still continued to show interest in Maple Plain.
Okay.
They are looking for a piece of property. So they had, they had talked to the kind of gateway property owners, and they had never been able to come to terms on that, and so we have identified a couple other potential properties that I know they've been, even within the last two weeks, kind of reaching out on some property to see, so that's something I think you're going to see us continue to try to promote, and continue to try to push QuickTrip. You know, they built, I mean, they built a lot of stores, so this one is one they'd like to get into our market, but they, they have other stuff, too, but we had a really productive meeting with them that I think is just going to take finding the right site for them to go on, and we don't have a ton, but they would like to be here.
Sure, okay, and in Maple Plain, and not anything borderline, right?
Yeah, I mean, there really is nothing borderline that would support them, you know, I mean, Independence has no sewer, and Medina's one property is down in the bottom of the hill, they, that wouldn't support them, so.
Okay.
It really needs to be somewhere between Baker Park Road and eighty-three, I mean, that's ba, that's their window.
Okay, and then my other question was, for the towers, have they all been updated? The mobile peo, or-
Cell towers?
Yeah, cell towers. T-Mobile and Verizon were all doing an update. Of course, we have winter, and it hasn't gone away yet, but, um, how, do we have any knowledge if that's being, in the works of being completed?
I don't know, do you know if they pulled all their building permits?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure they all pulled building permits, but whether or not they went through everything, I'm not sure.
Okay.
I mean, I got emails from T-Mobile saying, we're servicing a tower that you use frequently. I don't know if it's the one that's right over by my house, but-
Okay.
That indicates they're doing something, somewhere in this area.
Well, I know Verizon wants to do an update, and as soon as it do, it does create and is done, I'm removing something from my house quickly, so, so, yeah.
So I, I have a question that goes back to the mushroom thing. It was un, finally put under heavy manufacturing. I do not consider it han, heavy manufacturing. So can we get something listed so that it wouldn't be that? Under more like light manufacturing? What do other cities-
Are you asking for that building, or are you asking for the mushroom farming?
They moved down to different places. For that type of business? That far, farming in a building?
Indoor agriculture?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think if we were to, you know, we had offered that to them at one point, that we could make an ordinance amendment to, to specifically address that type of use, and then they kind of went away for a little bit, then they came back, and then they, they said they wanted to go into this other building, which was maybe, maybe allowed heavy manufacturing, maybe didn't, but rather than trying to craft a whole ordinance amendment, which I don't think they had the capacity to kind of work with us on, they just went for the conditional use permit for heavy manufacturing.
But how do other cities classify it?
Well, it's a relatively new land use and technology, so I think you do see urban agriculture, or you see food manufacturing, food product manufacturing, as a, like, as what, what the use would be for that type of in, indoor farming.
And should we have that in our ordinances?
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, there's two, there's two issues we had, one, that particular site is zoned mixed use, so it's not commercial, it's not light industrial, it's mixed use. So the question would be, do we want to change that zoning district to accommodate, you know, indoor farming or, or egg? And I would say you probably don't, because it's so limited where you would have the ability to do that, or want to do that within the mixed use. Certainly within your I industrial, you could look at updating that ordinance to accommodate, but typically we would do that if we had somebody come in that wanted to, you know, go through that process, and we do cover, we do cover man, food, food manufacturing, we just don't do it as robustly as kind of indoor farming, we don't, so it's, it's like a little bit in-between area.
It was more of the site.
Yeah.
Yeah, this one was a site issue that was the issue, not the land use. What they had, I mean, ultimately what they had a problem with is, there, there's, it, it was who was going to pay to pave a parking lot?
And that was between them and the-
Yeah, well, it was between them and the landlord, and-
And personally, I thought it was stupid to make a parking lot for forty-four employees when they only had eight. I do not like pavement.
Yeah. There's, there's a lot of interest still, we have a, we have a cool, cool potential use, maybe, I, I'm talking to a person about that space now, that I think would be a way better use, honestly. They also are financially challenged, I mean, they're, you know, you get a lot of people who look at that space and they go, wow, it's a huge warehouse, I could do a lot of really cool stuff, and then they talk to the owner, and he says, well, the cost to pave it and do all this stuff is yours, and they go, well, that's not so great, right, because, and what the, and I mean, just commentary, but the guy that, the food guy, I mean, he was trying to compare us to an existing warehouse in Minneapolis. Well, that existing warehouse, that owner had invested in pavement and lighting and landscaping and parking spaces, so all he had to do is go in and lease, he didn't have to do anything else. So then he's looking at this going, well, no, I'm going to pay for parking, you know, I mean, that's expensive.
Yeah.
So there is some disconnect between what the owner has in terms of his building and what he's trying to lease it as. And again, if he had a, if he has a manufacturing company that wants to come in and utilize a hundred and thirty-four thousand square feet with an office up front, he's, he can do that today, he's ready to go, but that unfortunately isn't who's out there trying to lease, so.
Is there, this might be a silly question, but is there any kind of, like, amendment that can be out there that requires someone that is within a certain district, especially within the city limits, required to have a paved parking lot, like, put this back on the landlord? Because, I mean, it is an eyesore.
He is required, but we can't, unless the use changes, we can't inform, we can't require him to retroactively, but for example, the, you know, I mean, this is a rub with the school, the old schoolhouse building, thirty-five hundred, highway twelve, they ruined their parking lot, and they, they asked us for permission to stockpile con bid, or, or by two minutes that was being reclaimed from a highway, so MinDOT wanted a storage spot, so they came in, they got permitted to do that, we said, if you do that, your parking lot's gone, and you're going to have to repave it, and they're like, oh, we got to repave it anyway, it's junk. So now we have a building that is quote-unquote unusable until they fix that parking lot, because they have to have a paved parking lot, and they, it's not what they have right now. But, so yes, it's, it's really right there now, this building, unfortunately, what they, we couldn't come in today and say, our standard changed, now you have to comply with it without you changing anything.
That would only work if it changed hands, as far as owners.
Yeah, if, or if they ask us, right, they expand, they change use, they change how it's set up, which is what we've told them, you know, if you break that space up, you're changing the spaces. Now, you know, the employee parking for that space is up in the front, and that's to service the office, and we only built enough parking to service the office, so now if they want to put kind of a new central space in there, they should bring, I mean, they have to still do the life safety things, like paved parking, a front door, lighting, you know, those are the things that we're trying to have them do, I, I don't think, I don't think what's been asked of them is onerous, I just think that they're, they're pushing back because they don't want to spend money, and so.
Well, I mean, you look at what they minimally did to freshen up the building, paint on the outside, and-
A roof.
A roof.
Yeah.
Which are essential things, so, but, yeah.
Yeah. I think we'll get there, this ne, this other use, if it comes through, would be kind of fun, but, I mean, there's a lot of people who look at that space, but, I mean, I, I see this a lot with big warehouse space, people are taking big warehouse space and breaking it up, there aren't those major users anymore, but there are a lot of smaller users. They just don't need as much big space anymore, so that idea that you'd take a hundred and thirty-four thousand and break it up into thirty thousand bays is much more popular, and I've actually seen some larger buildings breaking down into, like, say, two thousand square foot spaces, so. Like, I saw one re, or we did one recently, they took, you know, about a hundred thousand square foot, and they put it into about thirty different individual business spaces, so.
I see thirty different businesses as more money.
Right, yeah, it, it actually diversifies quite a bit, and it makes you a little more resilient, right, because then even if you have a couple vacancies, you still have good use, so.
I'd like to make a motion, I know we can't do resolutions, but I'd like to make a motion of appreciation to our departing city administrator, Clarissa, she's been great to work with, and gone through a lot in your tenure here, but you've been, you know, very professional, and very, very great, very good to work with throughout your time here, so I just want, wanted to express that, and, and make a more formal motion from our, from our commission. Do we have, do we have a second?
I will second that motion and say, thanks a lot for the transitions that we've been, and, you know, I haven't worked with you very often, or very, for a very long time, but I think it's been great to have you here in supporting our operations, especially when we've tried to figure out who's going to be chair next, you know, so. Making sure we open those public hearings. So, I'd second that motion. Any other items?
We could vote on the motions.
We can vote on the motions, yeah. So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say the same. Ayes have it, five to zero. There we go.
You folks, appreciate that.
Hearing no other discussions, first, I'd like to thank DeLuca for being with us today in replacement, so I'm glad to have you here.
Good to be here.
Can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I make a motion to say goodbye for the month, and adjourn the meeting.
I second that.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say the same. Meeting adjourned.